Oh, thank you. I was wondering why it wasn't loud enough.
Nobody's listening.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our May 8 regular session of the Ashland School Board. I call this meeting to order. Let the record show that we have all five directors present. And we will start with the land acknowledgement, which will be read by Jill Franco.
We acknowledge that the sacred land that we live and learn on today belongs to the Takelma, Shasta, Modoc, Klamath, and Umquah peoples. We honor and acknowledge the traditional owners of the land we now call the United States. We recognize the Native American peoples' continuing connection to land, place, waters, and community. We pay our respects to their cultures, country, and elders, past, present, and emerging.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Okay. So first, we have adoption of agenda. And I do have a couple of changes that we would like to make. And first is we are going to ask to table the secondary ELA curriculum review to allow just some additional time for those materials to be reviewed before we bring them forward. The second is, just for scheduling purposes, we would like to move the finance report up so that it will follow the school resource officer report as number nine. Okay? So if everybody's okay with that, I will take a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Adopt the agenda.
So moved. My second.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So next up, we have the consent agenda, which is fairly lengthy tonight just because there are a whole bunch of policies attached that we have had time to review individually. So we have the approval of minutes. We have multiple board policy updates, which have been reviewed, and personnel report and enrollment report. So if there isn't anything that people want to specifically pull, I will ask that somebody move that we accept the agenda as presented.
I wanted to get some, a little bit more clarification. Oh. I wanted to get more clarification from Superintendent Hatrick about the nondiscrimination in civil rights policy. That would be, it says AC. And what I wanted to ask is... So it looks like the changes are... I can see the first part. It's the district does not discriminate on any basis listed below. That makes sense. And then what's struck out is the board directs the superintendent to designate the district's civil rights coordinator or make contact information available. So then the replacement is the superintendent shall appoint individuals to contact on issues concerning the Americans with Disabilities Act. Can you tell me what that means?
I will go off memory, but if you can also direct me which policy you're looking at. Is it in first and second or second read?
It is a first read. It is AC.
Thank you. So that's if, without referencing it right now. I'll pull it up, though. It's identifying those people that would be the civil rights coordinator to which people could submit complaints or concerns.
Okay. So we don't... So it looks like we're not going to have an official civil rights coordinator?
No, we will. We actually have three identified right now.
Okay. Because that's what's been struck out. It designates the district's civil rights coordinator. Instead, it says it shall appoint individuals to contact on issues?
Can you tell me which page you're on, please?
Yeah. I'm on the first page of AC.
Is that maybe because there's multiple instead of just one now?
Uh, let's see. Good question. I don't know.
Because it went from...
If I'm going into first reads, it is AC, nondiscrimination, civil rights, recommended edits. First read?
Yep. So the language that was struck was that the superintendent would designate the district's civil rights coordinator. The next sentence talks about contacting around American ADA and Section 504. But on the second page, under civil rights coordinator, it spells out that the director of student services is the district's civil rights coordinator, and the superintendent can also designate others.
Okay.
So in addition to myself, we've got, so we've got the student services director, myself, and an assistant principal.
Okay. Maybe just, I think what would help for me is just rewording of, on the first page, under the language that is struck out, it says the superintendent shall appoint individuals to contact on issues. So is it to contact regarding issues?
Yes.
Or to speak upon? Just contact on issues, to me, was unclear what that meant.
Yeah. To contact. So in the handbooks and whatnot, we will have contact information to reach out to those people.
Could we just say contact regarding?
Sure.
Instead of on? Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? I will take a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
I move to adopt the consent agenda as amended.
A second?
All in favor? Okay. So next up, we then have the school presentation. And today, we have Helman here. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. We're proud Helman Dragons, and we're very excited to present some of the wonderful things that have been happening at our school. We have first graders here to share with you some exciting learning that's been happening for them. We have fourth graders Raylin, Jo Catherine, and Montgomery, who are proud to present their notable humans projects. And lastly, kindergarten teacher Ms. Tia will present a video made by fifth grade teacher Trish Dorr. Thanks for giving us this time, and we're excited to be here. We're going to kick off with Ms. Ashley, Logan, Zoe, and Cash, our first graders.
Hello. We have some first graders here, and they're going to introduce their names. They're going to tell you a little bit about what they've learned this year in first grade and probably about the 100 Book Club that all first graders are doing.
My name's Logan.
And what do you want to tell them about? How many books have you read for 100 Book Club?
110.
Oh. And what kind of books are you reading now in first grade?
I'm reading Diary of a Wimpy Kid.
Yeah. Nice job. Zoe, go next. I'm going to use that one.
My name is Zoe, and I've read 150 books.
Nice. And what kind of books are you reading, Zoe?
Well, actually, a lot of books.
A lot? Yeah. Do you want to go next?
My name is Cash, and I read 50 books.
50 books? And Cash, what's your favorite thing that we've learned about in first grade?
Math.
Math. What do you like about math?
That you get to count.
You get to do lots of counting. Thank you, first graders, for coming to share.
Hi. I'm Raylin.
And I'm Jojo.
We are fourth grade Dragons.
We studied BIPOC notable humans.
We wrote five paragraph essays that we focused on their lives, obstacles, struggles, and legacy.
I studied Jimmy Wingfield, who was a horse jockey, and he was really cool to learn about.
I studied Nadia Komeny. She was a very famous woman. She was a very nice person.
Here is Montgomery to share her notable human.
Shirley Chisholm, unbought and unlost. You don't make progress by standing on the sidelines whimpering and complaining. You make progress by implementing ideas. Shirley Chisholm's nickname was Fighting Shirley. If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. In 1968, Shirley Chisholm was the first Black woman elected to Congress. In 1972, she made history again by running for president. Tremendous amounts of talent were lost to our society because that talent was a scope. Shirley Chisholm was born 1924 and died 2005.
You want to say, "Go ahead," last?
I see, I see a lot of the same qualities that Shirley Chisholm has, but in my teacher, Ann.
Students up... Oh. Wait here. She constantly hears, helps students up for...
Stands up for...
Those are kids.
Stands up for kids, and I get a front row seat in watching it happen.
She changes people's lives and really like, what, uh, that about her.
Love you, Ann.
Well, we really appreciate you all having us here, and we just wanted to give you a little glimpse into what Helman looks like on a typical day. And our friend Trish Dorr, who you know, who came and played Jeopardy with all of you, has amazing cinematography skills, among many other things. And so she put this video together for our school. It's a Helman tradition. In November of every year, that she creates a gratitude video. And in this time, this tumultuous time, we just thought it's always great to send her gratitude and to bring kids to you. So enjoy.
I'm grateful for books because I love to read.
I'm grateful for trees because they give us oxygen to breathe.
I'm grateful for friends because they make me feel happy.
We are all grateful for families.
I'm grateful for art because I like drawing and making stuff out of clay.
We are grateful for...
Friends because we can trust them.
Sports because they're fun.
Books because they're amazing.
Milkshakes, well, obviously.
We are grateful for sports.
Because it entertains us.
Because it keeps us athletic.
Because it's healthy.
Because we make friends.
It's a fun way to exercise.
Yippee-ee-ee!
We are grateful for pets because they keep us company.
Cooking because it's yummy and fun.
Snow because it's cold and nice.
Who did chickens?
Chickens because they're cuddly.
Whee!
Whoa!
Duh duh duh!
Pickles because they're yummy!
They're full of vinegar and...
And delicious!
We are grateful for games.
It is good to bond with our family.
And friends.
We are grateful for Joe's Yodeling Pickle because it makes school awesomer.
We are grateful for trees because they give us clean air.
Trees!
I'm thankful for so many things, but most of all, my mom, because she takes care of me.
I'm grateful for lacrosse because it's fun and good exercise.
We're thankful for the planet Earth because we live on it.
We are grateful for...
Pets because they love you no matter what.
Sports because they're fun.
And friends because they're always there for you.
Bye!
I'm grateful for my brother.
I'm grateful for my big sister.
I'm grateful for my family.
I'm grateful for my family.
I'm grateful for Chipotle.
I'm thankful for my family.
I'm grateful taking care of my dog.
I'm grateful for teachers.
I'm grateful for the earth.
I'm grateful for the world.
I'm grateful for grilled cheese and tomato soup.
I'm grateful for David. David is awesome.
I'm grateful for friends.
Community.
Starbucks.
We are grateful for our families.
I'm grateful for all the teachers.
I'm grateful for friends and cats.
I'm thankful for families.
I'm grateful for my food, the food and water and medicine because they keep me alive, healthy, and help me when I'm sick. Even the soup.
I'm grateful for that my kitty has a same birthday.
And what are you grateful for?
I'm grateful for my dad. My cousin found a kitty wolf box on my iPad, and my dad put it on for me.
What's something that you're grateful for?
Pizza.
I'm grateful for my family.
Pizza.
I'm grateful for my cats.
I hear a lot of pizza.
I'm grateful for folks.
I'm grateful for teachers that help us life.
I'm grateful for my family.
I'm grateful for my presence.
I'm grateful for my cat.
I'm grateful for nature.
I'm grateful for learning.
I'm grateful that I was born with amazing biking skills.
I'm grateful for teachers.
I'm grateful for my school.
I'm grateful for my family and United States, America. I love you, America.
I'm grateful for dogs.
I'm grateful for nature.
I'm grateful for wolves.
I'm grateful for cookies.
I'm grateful for my family.
I'm grateful for all of nature.
I'm grateful for the world that we live on.
I'm grateful for the school that we go to.
Bring me sunshine in your smile. Make me happy all the while. In this world where we live, there should be more happiness, so much joy we can give to each brand new bright tomorrow. Make me happy through the years. Never bring me any tears. Let your arms be as warm as the sun from up above. Bring me fun. Bring me sunshine. Bring me love. And now, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Toni Elizabeth Prima. Bring me sunshine in your eyes. Bring me rainbows from the clear blue skies. Life's too short to be spent having anything but fun. We can be so content if we gather little sunbeats. Be lighthearted, darling. All day long, keep me singing a happy song. Let your arms be as warm as the sun from up above. Bring me fun. Bring me sunshine. Bring me love. Bring me sunshine in your smile. Make me happy all the while. In this world where we live, there should be more happiness, so much joy we can give to each brand new bright tomorrow. Make me happy through the years. Never bring me any tears. Let your arms be as warm as the sun from up above. Bring me fun. Bring me sunshine. Bring me love. Chop a doobie de juju. Make me happy through the years. Never bring me any tears. Let your arms be as warm as the sun from up above. Bring me fun. Bring me sunshine. Bring me love. Bring me fun. Bring me sunshine. Bring me love. Bring me fun. Bring me sunshine. Bring me love.
Just in case you needed a reminder of why you're all here, it's all those little beings is what this all truly comes down to. So thank you for your time. And we make sure in those videos that every single student is represented. So it might feel a little long, but every single student sees their face when they get to see those videos. So thank you for giving us this time.
Thank you. I think the world needs more swinging doughnuts. Right? Okay. Thank you, Helman. Okay. So next up, we have an action item. We have the 2025-2026 Student Board Representative Recommendations. I know we are all very eager to meet our new representatives for next year. And this will be presented by Superintendent Hatrick.
Yes. Good evening. Per policy, BCBA-AR, I'm really excited to present our recommended student board representatives. And in the policy, it does state at the first May board meeting, the superintendent will bring forward the recommendations. And the current student board representatives will announce their school's recommendation for the school board consideration. So it's my pleasure to then now turn it over to our current student board representatives. Take it away.
Yes. Time to pass the torch. So it is my pleasure to introduce who is here today, the wonderful Alice Carnahan.
Hi. My name's Alice Carnahan, and I'm a 17-year-old junior at Ashland High School. And I'm super excited for the opportunity to hopefully represent the students in the school district as your student representative this upcoming year. I've had a lot of amazing opportunities through the high school, such as being a part of the leadership class, being the junior class co-president, and being able to attend an International DECA conference. And through things like this and these opportunities they've offered me, I've learned how to organize events on a bigger level and how to be part of a team and how I love to be involved in the community on a greater scale. And I would love to bring those skills to the school board this upcoming year and be a voice for the students in our district. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. And then, secondly, we have Milo Lyserson, who could not be here tonight, but he has submitted a little video for us. So we'll take a look at that.
Hi. My name is Milo Lyserson. I'm a student at Ashland High School, and I can't wait to be a student representative of the Ashland School Board next year. A little bit about myself. I'm 16. I'll turn 17 in July. And I am a part of the Ashland High School Leadership Class as well as playing tennis and soccer for the school, and I like to ski in the winters. Through the leadership class, I have learned important lessons like what it takes to run big events and what it takes to also improve school culture. Those are two factors that I really hope I can improve alongside the rest of my peers on a larger scale next year as a part of the Ashland School Board.
Thank you, Milo. I don't know if he can hear us.
Yeah. He's actually at Districts for Tennis, I believe, right now. So... And then I would like to introduce the two alternates, which have been chosen as well for recommendation. We have Toby Pugh and Kaia Lutz. So great alternates.
All right. My name is Kaia Lutz. I am also 16. And I have been, like many of the kids that were in here in the school district for a long time. I was a Helman Dragon, too. And since being at Helman in the middle school and the high school, I felt incredibly supported and advocated for by the district, by my teachers, and the overall community. And I can't wait to have my opportunity to also make a difference in advocating for and supporting my peers and the younger students. I also am extremely excited for this opportunity because after high school, I'm looking forward to hopefully studying public policy and government, and I can't wait to get to see it all firsthand. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And we have Toby Pugh entering the stage.
Well, I'm very honored to be able to serve as the alternate board representative for the second year in a row. I'm very excited to be able to support the board reps whenever needed. I've been part of leadership class as well, so I have plenty of experience with running school elections, running events. I planned homecoming parade. So any logistical needs, I'm here. And I'm just super stoked to have the opportunity again to support not only student reps, but, you know, the whole school board, the community, all the people we serve. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Toby.
So the recommended candidates have been presented, and it would require a board vote. So I will now turn it over to our board chair.
All right. Are we ready to vote? Or do you guys have any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Is... So if I have a question about just how this process works, is it Ben who I should be asking the question to? Okay. Yeah. Love to ask a question, Ben.
Yeah. I think we'd all love to just have a very brief synopsis on what went into the...
Okay. So we opened up applications to our whole student body for, I believe it was a period of two weeks back in March. We had a total of nine applicants submit application by the due date. All were strong candidates. And as I looked through them, I decided, too, to look at overall attendance. And so we brought seven students forward to interview. Those seven were... Had 90% attendance rate for the school year or higher. And we conducted an interview process, reviewed their applications. And then, based on the kind of combined strength of their applications, the interview, their demonstrated history of participation and commitment to improving school culture, we went ahead and recommended the four that you see before you today.
So, you know, when we had initially discussed school board reps way back with Victor had initiated that, one of the discussions we had was really trying to reach out to the broadest variety of students that we could. So that meant alternative ed. It meant affinity groups because we know that we want to hear voices from all over the schools, even voices maybe that don't participate 90% or more, right? Because those are really who we want to hear from. Because those are really who we want to hear from. So I'm kind of curious, I know in the past there was more discussion of what it looked like to really be reaching out to students who we don't typically see in leadership, for example. How did that process work this time?
Yeah, so it was, the application process was announced continuously over the two-week process through our student morning announcements. We also, I believe, did some outreach as well to our affinity groups and promoted the position. And I think leader, our current board reps were involved in that process as well. And that's how we ultimately collected the nine applications.
All right. So are we ready to bring this to a vote? If we are, I will ask for a motion that we accept the, what do we call it? The candidates as recommended?
I move that we accept the candidates as recommended.
Oh, I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, congratulations, welcome. And I really, very, very strong work, you guys. Really look forward to working with you next year. Thank you. Okay, so next up, we have bond report with Steve Mittel and Josh Whitaker.
You keep catching us by surprise because we're used to like way down there.
Yeah, we're really mixing things up for you.
You know what, I'm not even going to put the presentation up because I'm going to have to scroll way down to get to the high school, and I know what that'll do to Evan tonight, so I'm not going to do that. Thank you for having us. Really, this is going to be short and sweet because we're in this place now where we are kind of smack dab in the middle of the seismic early work package. You know, we've done what we've done to the school campus in terms of sectioning off some parts of that campus to do some work. And I'll let Josh go into more detail, but we're only working from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, so the milestones are kind of far and few between, although we are hitting them. So it's going to be short.
Yeah, kind of to Steve's point, the modernization project, which is primarily the science and humanities building, is really, as we mentioned, the last couple of months in the commissioning phase and going through some punchwork. So part of that commissioning process is an air balance requirement. So through that, we found a few issues that needed resolve, so working through those, majority of those have been addressed now. So focusing back on rebalancing and then finalizing the commissioning process. One piece of outstanding work that we knew was going to be delayed was installation of some electrical gear related to the chiller at the gym. So that's on schedule for July-August installation, and then that'll be the kind of the final piece of that modernization project. So a lot going on behind the scenes right now. It doesn't appear to be as active as it is, but most of that's taking place in kind of remote areas of the school that don't impact staff and students as much. As far as the seismic project, that's very visible at this point. And I think it's been a big effort on the district to make sure that they have given every accommodation to the contractor to make sure that they can accomplish a pretty aggressive amount of scope for a summer project, including the seismic upgrade and the quad renovation. So definitely appreciate the staff and students' efforts and Steve's team for all the coordination and open lines of communication that are required to achieve that. But basically, update since last month, the majority of excavation in the quad has been completed. At least what can be done in the containments that we're limited to until school is out. The perimeter of the building and the structural upgrades have advanced pretty aggressively to the point that footings are in place now for the sheer walls, and they're starting to do some of the carpentry work there. And then we now have a containment in the library that, again, the district has offered the contractor as early work, allowing them to get a jump on some of the structural modifications. So that's in full swing, totally isolated from staff and students in the library. And then we're working towards some more additional early workspace in the counseling area potentially. So that's kind of the update for this month. We're on schedule, if not slightly ahead of schedule, which is a great way to go into the summer with the amount of work that needs to be accomplished.
You didn't mention you were ahead of schedule on refilling the potholes in the parking lot. Strong work on that, so thank you.
And we are receiving quotes, you'll be glad to hear, we have received, I want to say three.
We're waiting on our third.
Waiting on our third quote for asphalt repaving and some seal coating. So hopefully come back in the fall and it'll look brand new, new stripes, all the potholes filled officially. Kind of unofficial right now, but yeah, glad you noticed.
Thank you. And although the work that's going on the quad, that will continue on through the summer?
Yeah, the sections that we've been working on really were where we had a lot of demo to be done, so we were trying to get ahead of that. Once the staff and students leave for the summer, we will open that whole quad up, with the exception of the tree protection, and really most of that hardscape will go away, and that's when we'll start bringing the pavers back in.
Okay.
But we're going to wait till staff and students are out for that, because that would be, that would be beyond the base.
So what's your expectation of the quad like? I mean, is it ultimately going to be flat, or how does?
It's going to be flat, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a few adjustments in grade. I don't know if you're familiar with quad enough to know there's a ramp that goes down from the quad down towards the fields and the gymnasium. That we're trying to soften a little bit so that it actually meets ADA requirements. We do have an ADA ramp that is right in front of science, but we're trying to, again, we're looking for universal access, so anywhere you go, we want to be able to accommodate anybody. So that's going to have a little bit of softening. We're doing a little different treatment for that lower quad there. We're actually introducing some grass areas in both the lower quad and the upper quad area there. Going to work off of the half moon up top and expand a little bit with some grass there. But we're also putting a ramp around that half moon because up till this point, you would not be able to get up on that half moon if you were in a walker or if you were any otherwise abled. So there's going to be a ramp that goes up and around that to get up there, there's going to be some sail cloths over the top of that. Then all the hardscape is going to be turned to permeable paver so that that water can get down into the roots of that tree and maybe stop it from pushing up that, like it did the concrete. So yeah, it's, you know, we call it a beautification, but really what we're trying to do is just fix a lot of problems that have been plaguing us in that quad. And it got to a point where it was causing what we consider some safety issues with those roots pushing that concrete up and causing, for a while, the students were dodging cones all over the place because we were just putting cones on all the spots that the concrete was popping up. And it just got too far ahead of us, so we had to take it out and put some decomposed granite back in there. And so we're trying to fix all those problems and hopefully give the tree the water and what it needs to go deep instead of going wide and popping up, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have a school resource officer report with Mike Bates. Officer Mike Bates.
I'm just up here to sit in for Rebecca Bjornson, who wasn't able to attend tonight. So hopefully if there's any questions for the district, either myself or Superintendent Hatrick will be able to answer. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Officer Bates.
I apologize about that, I just want to stay on script here. Good evening, everybody. My name is Officer Michael Bates, and I'm the school resource officer for the Ashland Police Department in the Ashland School District. Since August 19th of 2024, I have been dedicated full-time to the Ashland School District as the Ashland School Resource Officer. In October of this year, I will celebrate 10 years as a police officer. I can honestly say that I have never had more fun as an officer, felt more passionately about my work, and felt like I'm making a genuine difference in the community that I grew up in than in the last nine months. This school year has been a blur of positive interactions, and with that said, I have never more felt the gravity and the responsibility that I have been entrusted with than working with the students, families, and staff of the Ashland School District. As an Ashland School District graduate, I understand the impact a police officer's presence can have in the school setting. I have vivid memories of Ashland officers on campuses and fully know the laughs shared and difficult conversations had have the potential to create lasting positive impacts. The memorandum of understanding agreed by the district and the police department requests a report of the SRO program activities, accomplishments, and areas of improvement. So we'll start that. I apologize for the very wordy slide here, but this is basically what I've been up to for the last nine months. So there's some trainings there on the left. These are specifically for school resource officers working in law enforcement in a school setting and things like that. Leadership ethics, anti-bias for law enforcement, the National Association for School Resource Officers basic training was last year prior to selection, and standard response protocol, just some pretty basic things for working in a school setting. Looking at safety and security specifically, in this role, I fully understand that I have and cannot have the answer for every situation or every student or every family. But a pivotal part of this assignment is being a resource to provide a warm handoff to a person, service, who may have the specific expertise to further assist the current needs. So the safety and security is kind of the bigger umbrella of everything that we've been working with. These are the, some of the teams that we meet with, like the SOESD, the Southern Oregon Education Service District, doing staff room surveys, mandatory reporting, different events throughout the community, and then just general safety trainings. Enforcement, obviously, there is an enforcement element to being a school resource officer, but it generally looks quite different than regular patrol enforcement. Enforcement in a school setting is much more of a collaboration between service providers to educate and support youth development, which aligns with our Ashland School District mission to empower students to be lifelong learners, responsible citizens, and stewards of the world. So yes, enforcement does take place, but it's much more of a collaborative process between all of the stakeholders in whatever is occurring to, to find a best solution rather than just hand out tickets and things like that. One quick example is, living in Ashland, I'm sure you see the electric bikes that are all over the city. They can definitely have some safety issues, and there are some legalities that go along with that. One of the schools reached out to me to come talk to some of the staff and students about the rules and regulations about their electric bikes. And rather than just sitting somewhere and handing out a bunch of citations, we're hoping to learn from these experiences, explain the laws, explain where they came from, and go from an educational way rather than just a strict enforcement. Looking at the engagement, I think it goes without saying, engagement is my favorite part of this assignment. I've gotten to see our students do some absolutely amazing things and have been part of some great events. I've been invited to speak with health and leadership classes at both the high school and middle school, family education nights, and community events. I have provided event control for district events like the Walker MLK March to SOU and the high school's homecoming parade. Stepping into this new partnership was one of my main priorities, was building trust and rapport with staff, students, and families. I'm proud to report that it quickly became a daily occurrence for students to pop in, grab a snack, and just talk about their day. The individual relationships I have built with staff, students, and families in my first school year has led to a strong sense of partnership and a better understanding of how community-oriented policing can best serve our district. This little Venn diagram of happiness here where the bear paw is, is where some really awesome magic happens. The rapport has been built one-on-one, and we'll have students come in and talk about what's going on in their lives, what's going on in their day. We've had some really great, really great interactions just in that little area of enforcement and engagement. I've had students come and talk about that they've been victims of criminality, or that maybe they've committed criminality, and it's really weighing hard on them. So we've thought of some creative ways to reach out to what their maybe victim was and have some restorative justice through that process without the enforcement element. SRO accomplishments. So local emergency management collaborations, we've done a lot of assisting in this different drills, everything from fire drill to secures and lockdowns. We've changed the way that we've done these a little bit, which has been really awesome. At a couple of our elementary schools, we've actually gotten a whole team of police officers or a whole team of firefighters involved to go room to room and clear, clear the students from whatever drill that they are participating in. It's been a great learning opportunity for our fire teams because they're getting more time in the buildings to learn the buildings. It's been a great opportunity for our police officers because they get to interact with the students and learn the buildings and the layout of everything. And then I think it's been a great opportunity for the students because they get to see the officers get excited and work together, and we're all having some fun there for sure. Staff trainings, earlier in the year, Rebecca Bjornson and I went to each site and talked specifically about the standard response protocol, talked to the staff about what the elements of the SRP are, and then showed some videos and did some things like that. Classroom presentations, I've been invited to a lot of different classrooms to speak about anything from distracted driving to internet safety. At the high school specifically, we have a lot of new drivers, so they have questions about just general rules of the road, that kind of thing. Site-specific safety updates or upgrades. Through these drills, we've learned a lot of flaws or things that could have been changed. I mean, sometimes it's just as simple as this door handle needs to be switched around. We make a quick ticket to maintenance, they get it fixed, and we find some of these weaknesses that we might have. And then through this school year, I've dedicated about 180 hours of overtime just to engagement and just extracurricular activities. We've had science fairs at Bellevue and art fairs and music recitals and all that kind of thing that we've been involved with just to engage with the students, all the dances and games and things like that. I think it's really important for a lot of the students to see a consistent face cheering them on on the sidelines there. Want to talk briefly about the SRO advantage of what has been extremely successful so far in this program. The SRO program provides a direct access to many resources for our students and families. Having one dedicated officer to support our district's state mandated reporters has significant benefits. The connections made between ASD staff and myself has allowed a trusting relationship to complete mandated reports in an efficient and complete manner. These reports are not passed from one person to one person, then a call taker to a call taker. They are typically given straight to one intake worker, then followed up directly by me. Traditionally, a victim or survivor of criminality, neglect, or abuse may work with several officers or caseworkers and may be required to explain their experience multiple times, perpetuating trauma and potentially creating inconsistencies in care. In our current model of practice, from the first report, the SRO may be involved, specifically focusing on trauma-informed practices and victim-and-survivor-centered investigations. I have a trusted team of officers, detectives, and advocates, and social service providers to lean on, but I prioritize being a familiar resource to our stakeholders through this process. The big thing here is they have a familiar face in whatever is occurring there. I can provide a warm handoff to a lot of these different agencies that we work with up here, whether that's JC Start for advocacy, the Children's Advocacy Center. It's a very traumatic experience to go through this process, and if they have a familiar face along the way, rather than being passed from officer to detective to somebody else, it definitely lessens that trauma impact. Okay, I'm going to do my best to explain what's going on here. These are the cases that have been taken by me this school year. And I say me is specifically, these are the cases that I have written outside of any other officer. So there are, I'm sure, other cases that have happened at district property and involving our staff, students, and families, but these are the cases that I have personally taken as the school resource officer. And the difference between cases and just an incident, there's probably about five incidents to every actual case. What this explains is that these are reports that have been generated and created that are held at the police department, that document basically some sort of criminal event or event that warrants some sort of further documentation than just an incident or some quick notes. So we can see that just general incident reports is the number, the biggest piece of the pie here at 32. And these are criminality that may have no suspects, that may have, the victim of the crime doesn't want to pursue any criminal charges or something like that, but we're still going to document it in case we need to come back to it at some point or anything else comes up later. Confidential investigations are things like sexual assault and child abuse. Violations are things like minor possession of alcohol or marijuana. What the violation number is representing is a citation specifically. Misdemeanor, same thing, is representing an arrest at the misdemeanor level that actually occurred. And then same with felony. Child welfare is more of a bigger piece there, and it's, again, documenting that something was reported and how it was investigated. So what these numbers show is that the, if you're looking at like the misdemeanor, it's not necessarily that 13 different students received misdemeanors this year. It's sometimes one student or more students received a couple of these citations for whatever occurred. for whatever occurred. And then our future program goals. One thing that I really want to look into is having some better data, and that's specifically for engagement. It's, it's been a really good experience to get really good relationships with all of the site administrators, and it's really easy to just give a quick phone call back and forth, but that doesn't always get logged as some sort of engagement or incident or anything like that. So next year, I'd really like to be better about tracking these specific numbers of, of what went on consistently each day. We have a way to do that through our dispatching center. I will admit, it just didn't quite happen the way I'd like it to from the beginning of the year. And we didn't really know what we were getting into because this was a very new thing, especially we haven't had one in like 10, SRO in about 10 years. So getting back into it, we now know what we want to keep track of. And then just the total calls for service, because like we said, we've pulled about 85 cases, but calls for service are in the hundreds of, you know, there's, there's a lot of calls for service at our districts, even if it's just a, an open line 911 call because someone hit 91 and then another one accidentally. I want to earn invitations to new classrooms, clubs, and affinity groups that I haven't gotten the chance to speak with yet. And then I would like to look into obtaining some age-appropriate curriculum and aids to enhance the classroom visits. I've had a lot of requests for classroom visits, which is great, but I want to make sure that we prepare better presentations, whether that's for new drivers, rules of the road, internet safety, drug and alcohol awareness, or just general safety in society. Safety in society is a big one for the elementary, elementarys because it's just how to be out in public and what is, you know, how to be safe. This is a nice little letter that Rebecca G. from the middle school wrote me, and I don't have it in front of me, so Steve, do you want to read this for me?
Need glasses?
I'll give a shot. Our effectiveness in addressing student behaviors and helping students make better choices has greatly improved the support of our school resource officer, Officer Bates. He is timely, approachable, and highly knowledgeable, making him a valuable part of our school community. At AMS, we view discipline not just as a consequence, but as a learning opportunity. When students meet with Officer Bates, the focus is on education and reflection. He helps students understand the real-world consequences of behaviors such as bringing or ingesting substances on campus, fighting, stealing, or engaging in harassment. These conversations are developmentally appropriate and emphasize how such choices can escalate and affect their future as they grow into adulthood. Officer Bates also plays a key role in reinforcing the partnership between school and home. Both parents and students consistently share that they feel supported, informed, and reassured knowing that Officer Bates is on campus. His presence promotes not only safety, but also a culture of accountability, respect, and growth. Rebecca Gramati, Assistant Principal, Ashland Middle School.
And that is all I have. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you. So I'm just curious, how do you tend to split your time between campuses? Are you mostly at the high school? You obviously spend some time at the lower levels as well.
Mostly at the high school and middle school, and then as needed, at the elementary schools.
Okay.
Elementary schools is very fun. I have to give a shout out to Hellman because pickup at Hellman is like a block party, and it is an absolute blast because Miss T's out there with the speaker and everybody's dancing, and yeah, it's a blast. So I get to go do a lot, bunch of fun stuff at the elementary schools, but my time is generally at the high school and middle school.
And I guess I would just maybe get one brief comment from you guys. Do you have any feedback from students, positive, negative?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say this in my report, but it goes without saying that Officer Bates does a fantastic job, and I think the most impactful moment is actually a collection of moments, and that's just every day I see him on campus, he greets me by name with a smile, as he does with so many other students, and we're all just so grateful for that.
Thank you.
I have to say also, recently, Officer Bates came into my family health class and actually was talking about distracted driving, and that was relating to a unit we were on within the class. And he was super engaged, very educational, and also very easy to talk to for a lot of the students. He was really good at getting people to engage in questions, even though the class was mainly quiet for the first part of it, even when we were trying to ask some questions, but he was really good at getting the students to talk and be interested in what we were talking about. It was really, it was a good experience in the classroom for sure.
All right, thank you for that feedback. Anybody else?
So I'm so glad you brought up e-bikes because, yeah, we, I am surprised at how many kids are riding them that are under the age of 16, and I thought that the law was that you had to be 16. And so can you talk to me about how, I mean, it, it sounds like you're addressing it, which I really appreciate. But yeah, like I said, and around the middle school, I see significant numbers of kids riding them.
Yeah, absolutely. Middle school and high school, both for sure. There, at the beginning of the year, there weren't that many of them. So we started to speaking to individual students that we contacted in the community based off generated calls for service. Because these calls for service were generated in the community, sometimes I didn't have a piece of that, but sometimes I did. So when I did, I was able to speak with these students one-on-one, call home, and explain the statutes and things like that to different families. Because there is also a statute for, that parents or families can be cited if the student is, is out in the community riding these bikes when they're not supposed to be, if they're under 16. So I wanted to make sure that everybody had that educational piece. I know that I talked to Mr. Ratsloff at the middle school about sending out a little flyer at the beginning of next year to make sure that everybody had this information, because it is becoming an issue. It's definitely a great way of transportation, but there's a couple of different versions of these bikes that we're seeing. Some of them aren't really electric bicycles at all because they don't have the pedal part of it. It's just like a little motorcycle, yeah. So when there's no driver's license involved, when there's a, a lot of power involved, there's other, other things that these, these students can be cited for that I don't want to see them get hindered for getting their driver's license when they turn 16 and things like that. So there's definitely a bigger piece to, to just the safety of riding the bikes around, but, but they're, they're definitely out there.
I have more questions. Okay.
Oh, I have a question. So I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, that before we had an SRO, or in the period when we did not have an SRO, that district admin would just interface directly with APD? And with everything focusing kind of through you, what's the impact on freeing up APD?
Pretty big, pretty big. It frees up two different things. It frees up our patrol officers, then it's also freeing up our detectives. So if we go back to look at that, what that pie chart showed, those confidential investigations and a lot of those calls that work with the Department of Human Services, an officer traditionally takes those calls, and then they get forwarded to detectives who have a little bit more special training in how to investigate these sensitive cases. So if, if I am taking them, then I keep the case the entire way through from disclosure to prosecution if that is need be. So it's not going to patrol anymore, and it's not going to detectives anymore, so it frees up a, a little piece of both of that, that, those areas. So it's definitely a big impact to the police's, the department as well. One thing I will say is that typically, those 85 cases, those are cases that would have come to the police department anyway. It's not like I'm, these are generally not self-initiated cases. They're from reports of anything that we can mention, but they're, they're cases that would have come to the police department eventually anyway. But it does free up that, the patrol team to do what they need to do, and the detectives to focus on their other caseload.
So how is, looks, how, okay. How is this position funded? Is it, is it funded by the APD?
It's funded by the police department.
Okay, okay. And then last question. So, you know, one of the board's concerns for a long time about having a position of SRO was just the impact on our marginalized students, you know? And I didn't see any way that we're tracking right now interactions with students, black, brown, sped students, you know, by non-binary, so forth, all, everything in between. So what are you, do you have plans to, you know, keep that, track that somehow, or, because that's what I really want to make sure, obviously, is that, that there's not a negative impact?
I, I think it depends on, on what we're tracking specifically. If we're tracking, if we're tracking enforcement, all that data is tracked at the police department. If, if an arrest is made, we have the demographic specifics of what that is. But if it's just engagement, then I want to make sure that I'm invited to these spaces before I just go barging into them. That's why on the, like the affinity groups, I want to make sure that I earn the invitation there rather than just, you know, make my way in. But that is something that I want to look into is, is earning those invitations and then tracking who exactly that we are engaging with.
Thank you, Officer Bates. So the, when we were talking about this last year, about starting this position back up, a big clincher for me was that it was student-driven, that it was students that were asking for this. And it's also a huge reinforcement to hear this positive feedback from students, so well done, and thank you. I'm curious about, you've mentioned, and you touched on it a little bit just now, what your plans are to earn those invitations into those affinity groups and, and other groups as well? And I'm pleased to hear that there's a real focus on interventions beyond just enforcement. So thank you for that as well. So, but the question was, what, what's your plan to earn those invitations?
Well, I want to make sure that I have something to offer for them. So again, like looking at some of the curriculums of talking about something, some of the specific things, I want to make sure it's not just me coming there, I want to make sure that I'm bringing something to the table to offer them. So when clubs start up in the beginning of the year, and when these affinity groups start up, I'd like to have either like a flyer or something that explains kind of what an SRO does, and then make sure that I get those to the club leaders and the affinity group leaders to, to provide that as sort of an open door for them to, to invite me if they choose to do so.
If I can also chime in, it's exciting to also know that our advisor that oversees all of the affinity groups at the high school has shared with me, and I've, I've seen firsthand that he's already earned the invitation of all of our affinity groups. So that's great. I had the, the honor of attending our Black Student Union this week, and they share the same sentiment, so that's really great. Good work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are going to move up to our finance report.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. It's not happy. Okay, there we go. I think I'm good now. I think it's all done asking me questions. So first of all, I want to say that it looks like the financial picture for Ashland School District is getting clearer and brighter, so that's a good thing. So first, I'll talk about the revenue. One of the positive things that has happened this month is we got our May 2024 estimate from ODE. And so that's the reconciliation of our transportation expense, our property tax reconciliation from prior school year, and our teacher experience rating. And so that resulted in about a little over $500,000 increase in revenue for this current year, so that was good. And then our high-cost disability came in at about $80,000. And then we also got a bump up for the current school year. And that was from a change in the property taxes. And I don't, ODE doesn't typically go in and adjust property tax revenue in the middle of the year. It's usually, we have to go in and do that, we have to go in and adjust our estimate. So I know I didn't do that, so I'm assuming somebody at ODE must have been, you know, watching our property tax collections and maybe did the adjustment. Anyway, that was a little over $200,000, so we had a little over $800,000 increase in revenue for this school year, so that was a good thing. And so then the other positive is I spent a good portion of the month of April just kind of scrubbing the encumbrances and, you know, going back through the reports that had been done previously, and the reports that Jackie had done, and then just looking at actual expenditures and getting a better handle on trending for the district. And so I reduced the expenditures by quite a bit. As I'm sure you'll see on the expenditure page, it's about 1.9-ish million that I reduced the expenditures. And so the combination of the additional revenue and then the lowering of expenditures, it looks like we're reducing our deficit down from over $2 million to under $1 million, so around $800-ish thousand. I do think that as we move our way through May and June, that we'll see that even come down a little bit more. I didn't want to get too overly aggressive with our personnel costs, so I do think that we will see even a little bit more of a positive trend on our expenditures going down. So all in all, that's why I say the picture's looking much better, makes me feel much more comfortable after I've had some time to really dig in and, you know, continue to look at the financials of what had happened, you know, what had been going on prior to me arriving, and then the last couple of months. So all that's been good. Do you guys have any questions about any of that? Yes?
So the, I mean, I think you kind of explained it, but I just want to hone in on it a little bit and make sure I'm understanding, but, because just in one month, it looks like our, that we've saved kind of a quarter of our salaries, so there was like a $400,000 savings on what we projected in terms of expenses for salaries.
Yes.
So obviously, you know, that's, that's a, that, you know, we didn't all of a sudden have a riff of a quarter of our staff, so.
No.
Yeah. So can you just talk a little bit more about that, like where, yeah?
Yeah, so part of that is the reductions that were made. There were some staff reductions that were done this year. Those were pretty minor, but there were also the furlough days. And so making sure that those are being incorporated into the encumbrances. And initially, that wasn't being done. When the payroll is run, there's a process that you can do that updates the encumbrances and that takes into account any of the reduction days or any of the staffing that has been reduced. That hadn't been done. And so that was one of the things as I was going through and looking at, okay, you know, why am I seeing some of these variances and what is causing that? And that, that was the main part of it, is the encumbrances were just not being done on the payroll side to take advantage of the reduction measures that you all had put into place earlier in the school year.
I know that you've spoken about having to go back, and you've done all this amazing work to have to rebuild the inaccurate budgets from previous years. Has that helped with creating a clearer forecast of?
Yes, it definitely has because it's allowed me to see kind of a better trend of what your expenditures typically are in school districts unless you have some major something. Your expenditures trend pretty much the same. And so getting a really clear picture of that has definitely helped quite a bit in kind of refining what the projections are looking like now.
How, how far off were the project, previous projections from the reality of?
Well, that's a really good question. So when I got here, I was working with some of the work that Jackie had done when she was here, and then overlaying that with some of the work that Scott had done as well. And so just kind of chewing that up to reality, it was, it was skewed pretty much. And so part of it was just a function of the formulas and spreadsheets not being accurate, I guess is the best way to say that. And so once I went through and kind of dug into what the formulas were, and then cleaned those up, and then it's like, okay, we're start, I'm starting to see now that it's not quite as bad as what I thought it was when I first got here. So, which, like I said, has made me feel more. So, which, like I said, has made me feel much better.
So, were those skewed formulas part of the process of budget building in the past? So, they're, they're building off of an incorrect assumption originally with those formulas?
Yes. And the other thing that we've kind of stumbled into, especially as part of working on the 25, 26 budget, is there are some things within the system that we're not working the way that they should. And so, like that's not the fault of the previous business director or Jackie or anyone. That's just a function of the infinite vision system. So, and that was one of the big things that we discovered is like, okay, I have to be really careful about what I'm looking at when I'm pulling together a report to make sure that the system is giving me the right information. So, in putting together the initial payroll projections for 25, 26, so I'm putting, I'm running the data, I pulled the data over and then you apply the COLA percentages, the update in PERS, and then you run the report and you take a look at that. And it's like, okay, this, something's really wrong here because it's like doubling up on health insurance and it was doubling up on life insurance and then positions that had been closed were still pulling into the report. I was getting really frustrated after like the fifth time of like, what am I doing wrong? So, I talked to Jackie, who's definitely more experienced with infinite visions and she looked at it and she goes, okay, there's something not right in your system. So, then we had to go back and kind of figure out what the issue was with, just within the system. And so, that's been part of the process too.
Okay.
Is just kind of digging into the system and making sure that what we're pulling out of the system is actually accurate.
Yeah. I don't want to derail the presentation and go too far down the rabbit hole, but is that a general, is that a flaw with infinite visions as a system or a miscalibration in how it was set up?
I think it's both.
Okay.
I'm not going to lie. I am not a fan.
Thank you.
Of infinite visions. It's, to me, it's a very archaic system and there is a lot of manual work that goes into the system just to get the data into it, which in this day and age, like we should not be having to do this much manual work to, you know, have a financial system. So, yes, it's partly that and then partly the setup. And I think that's where some of the issues probably that Scott had is when the system's not doing what you want it to do, then people start using Excel. And then they build everything in Excel and then they import it into the system because they feel like they have a little bit better control of what they're doing when they're working with Excel. Well, there's not much fidelity to Excel. I know you guys know that. I mean, anybody can, can touch it and change it. And so, it's multiple, it's multiple issues, so.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you.
Just ask a follow-up to that because I wanted to talk about projections also, just in terms of, it was so funny, I was listening to the Parks meeting last night and it, it could have been you talking because I heard almost the exact same thing. She said, "Well, we over-projected our revenues and under-projected our expenses." And I was like, "I swear Sheri said the same thing." So, are they using infinite visions also?
They could be. I know that in Grants Pass, they moved to a Tyler system as well. And I think some of the counties, cities and counties have done that, have moved to, to go in with a Tyler system. So, I don't know for sure here.
Yeah.
But it's possible.
So, my main question is just, you know, for example, the donation, the large donation that we received. Or for example, like, you know, where as you're cleaning up things this month, there's this 800,000 and another 800,000 influx. How do we make sure that it's getting corrected so that the projections for next year are not based, you know, the system isn't basing it off of what this month's numbers are, for example, or last month's where we had this one influx of cash?
So, I make sure that that doesn't happen. So, when I pull a report, I check it in multiple ways to make sure that it's not pulling in anything in duplicate that it shouldn't. And so, I mean, because you can check it down to the actual level of the amount that was entered into the system, right? And so, you can verify that that was what the donation was or what the ODE additional payment was that we received. So, there are definitely ways that you can go in and check that. And so, I am always very careful about doing that because I want to make sure that the information that you guys are getting is correct.
But there is potential for user error a little bit.
Oh, there's definitely potential for user error. And so, before I ever go final with a budget, Joseph will be looking at it. This last weekend, our cabinet, I took my projection worksheet in because I wanted the whole cabinet to look at it and just make sure that my theory was right and that what I was looking at, that was making sense to them as well. So, I don't just do it in a vacuum. I always make sure that there's at least one other set of eyes that's looking at it. And in building the budget, I'm having the principals and the directors also help with that. So, they'll put together their budgets, then I will review those, then I'll put those in the system and then I'll check that back against what they gave me and, and what I had reviewed. So, it's not, it's not just the system's going to spit out a budget. We're going to make sure that what we're putting into the system is what each of the principals has budgeted. We've given them an allocation amount and they have to budget to that. And so, they have to do that for their 100 funds, their 105 and their 110, which those are kind of like their club accounts, I guess. And so, for both of those, so we look at the revenue, we look at the donations that they think they might be getting, what kind of fees are they going to be getting? Is it reasonable compared to what we're actually seeing that we're bringing in this year? So, there are a lot of different things that we look at as we're, we're going through and building the budget.
And thank you so much and also thank you so much that you're staying with us for a bit longer. I'm so grateful. And also, so somehow you're able to communicate this so that the next person that follows you is able to also, I mean, hopefully you will train.
Yes. Yes, I'll stay on board as long as you guys need me to. This is a great school district and I don't, I don't want to see you guys get into a mess again. So, we're going to make sure you have a good system going forward. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that we're getting a few positive inquiries about the loan. And so, we've had several banks that have reached out to the firm that we're working with up in Portland. And so, there's a possibility that we'll ask you for a special board meeting next week to review that and so you can take a look at what we're looking at. One of them I'm really intrigued by because it's, it's more, to me, it feels kind of like a line of credit, but it's not really a line of credit. But you don't have to draw down the entire amount. You only draw down what you need and then you're not paying interest on that full amount if, if you end up not using it. So, I'm very intrigued by that one. So, hopefully this next week, we'll have something for you guys to review and approve. Anything else?
Well, I also just want to throw in my sincere thanks for coming in and helping us out. I mean, I just, can I repeat this, that our ending fund balance went from negative 2.2 million to 800,000? I mean, that's really great, great, great news.
Yeah.
Okay? Negative 800,000.
Yes.
So, from negative 2.2 to negative 800,000. All right, that's, that's a very significant change. And so, this is, I'm, the first time in probably over two years that I have been excited about a finance report.
That's good.
So, I want to thank you. I want to thank Dr. Hatrick for bringing you here. I want to thank our board for bringing Dr. Hatrick here. We are finally making progress.
Yes.
This is great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to echo that also. Thank you so much because to me, it's, there's both a philosophic thing that needed to be corrected, which you've done. Thank you, Dr. Hatrick, and a systemic thing, which you're doing and thank you.
Yes, thank you guys too for your support as well.
Can I ask two small follow-up questions, please?
Yes.
That one is if infinite visions is a questionable system, is there a more resilient one that we could potentially shift to? Just doesn't need to be answered now.
Do you want Sheri to get up on her soapbox?
It sounds great.
I mean, I remember infinite visions was going to be the solution to another, the previous one we had that was terrible. So, to be frank, it, we seem to keep, I mean, it would be nice to have a decent system, but we, the previous one, infinite visions was going to be our solution to all the problems we were having with the previous one.
So, okay, I've been doing this a long time, right? And the third-party systems are almost all like, they feel like Excel-based, right? And so, it takes a lot of manual work to get out of the system what you want out of the system. And there's a lot of margin for error in that. So, the system we had in Grants Pass, which they just have recently moved to infinite visions, which they did that after I left because I said, "I refuse to give up what we have" because all of the folks in the valley who moved from what we had to infinite visions or one of the other ones said, "Man, you hold on to what you have until your dying breath because these systems are not worth it." So, what we had was a mainframe system. And the problem in schools with the mainframe system is that you have to have someone who knows how to program that. We were fortunate. We had an awesome gentleman in Grants Pass who was the person who was able to program that system for us. It was the same type of system that like Costco uses, Fred Meyer uses, Les Schwab, all of the big companies use the same type of system. But somebody has to know how to do RPG programming and people don't want to learn how to do that because they want to do the pretty point-and-click stuff. So, if you really want to have a good system with fidelity, you need to have a mainframe and we need to have somebody that would step up and be willing to do the programming for that. And I don't know, you know, I don't know if a person could reach out to IBM and ask them if they have a solution that they would be willing to look at. But the difference in how I built a budget in Grants Pass compared to here is night and day different. And it's, it was just so much easier for me, for our administrators and the reports that you can get out of that and the ability for them to just go online to our district internet and look at their balances, like for their club accounts, for their 100 funds, it's just, there is no comparison.
I don't know about you all, but what was it, two weeks ago, I saw an opportunity. Sheri's incredible and if every district in the state needs a good solution, there's an opportunity. So, we don't need IBM, we need us.
Yeah.
So, more to come.
There you go.
My final question was just a very small one. I assume the fantastic work you all, truly fantastic work you all have done in reducing the deficit so far will also affect the loan amount that we're looking for, hopefully?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
That's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, next we will move on to our recurring reports and we will start with the AHS student report.
All right, I will make this brief, but I also wanted to add that hearing the Hellman book little setup there, I checked my Goodreads and I have only read 16 books this year. So, I am slacking. I need to catch up with these people. So, anyway, and then I wanted to, yeah, yes, I wanted to acknowledge a student we have at Ashland High School. I didn't want it to get overshadowed in my report, which is our junior, Celia Lang, who was elected a Student Thespian Officer for the State of Oregon and she is one of only six. So, that is a very prestigious award and we're very glad to have her on campus. Moving on, some events we've had at the high school. We had Clash on the Quad, which despite the renovations that we've heard about, was a tremendous success. Students loved it and we made do with the environment that we had. We had prom, just a little event that we do every year. Very nice and I'm sitting next to our prom queen, Azalea Davis-Powell. So, yes, it was an extraordinary event. We had Candidates on the Quad, where we are having our election process for my job, ASB co-president. We have had those election packets out for a couple of weeks and we have a four-way race for the presidency, which will culminate in a, an in-person vote in late May. So, we are looking forward to seeing who will be leading the school, so to speak. As we saw with Milo not being able to attend, the golf and girls tennis districts are today as well as the boys tennis districts, which are tomorrow. And that's in Eagle Point and Eugene respectively. There was a track meet today at the high school, which I came directly from, just spectating. And at the theater at the Ashland High School, running from May 15th through the 17th, a new show, "Is He Dead?", question mark, which looks intriguing. You all should come by and give it a watch.
Don't spoil it.
I, I, I'm, ask Celia about that. Leadership was very honored to sponsor another blood drive, which Azalea can speak to because she runs point on that. And in a more serious note, at the high school, we are fully engaged in AP testing, which goes through this week and next. So, thank you.
Indeed, Owen covered most of what we needed to talk about, honestly, which is great of him. But yes, we ran our blood drive on Tuesday this week. It went very well. Unfortunately, I had to leave halfway through because we had a softball game in Mount Shasta. However, we got a lot of donors to come and a lot of walk-ins as well this time. I'm not sure if we beat our last one, but we did have a lot of donors come in this time and we had at least, I know, over 10 that were signed up from online already. So, that was good. We got our Power Red coming in too. That was set up by the leadership class and it was great. We love seeing community come in with those events as well. It's super hopeful to see and it's a great community event to just have people come in too. Our spring sports have been going in full swing. Softball and baseball have been going on, like Owen was talking about track as well. The high school's been rolling very fluently, I'd say. It's getting to a point where a lot of our seniors are getting ready to graduate, head out, unfortunately. So, we're prepping for graduation as well and other things like that and just kind of passing the torch at this point in time.
Can you tell us what the date of graduation is?
It is June 6th, I believe.
June 6th. Wow, that is coming up. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Owen and Azalea. Next up, we have OSEA report with James Johnson.
Okay, well, Martha High School, Dolly and the lunch staff have been amazing. I think they continue to be amazing, handling all the field trip lunches with a big thank you from Alan here. Kelly Martin at Hellman shared that she wanted to say the shout-out to her classified staff who are supporting and caring for each other during these challenging times. They're losing longtime classified staff and it's hard. They're holding each other and giving love even amongst all the challenges. At AMS, Bridget Carnes is an invaluable member of our sixth-grade team. She takes initiative when students, she's an EA by the way, when students need help and she is trained to be a test administrator. She jumps in anytime one of them, the teachers needs help with the kids. Because one of those teachers is legally blind, Bridget has helped administer the tests for state testing and monitoring everything on the computer. She has been her eyes in countless ways and she's not sure what she's able to do with her, without her next year. Bridget cares deeply for students and is always checking in to be sure their emotional needs are being met and she is a rock star. It's like I'm telling Alan here. All right, at, that was the middle school. Also at the middle school, from the site-based program, McKenna Presley, Daniel Tolliver, Bonnie Fotinos and Tavante T. D. Deloney. They are fearless, unshakable and utterly amazing crew that keeps the SBS classroom running like a well-oiled and occasionally chaotic machine. Their patience is legendary. Their teamwork is unstoppable and their ability to handle anything that comes their way deserves a standing ovation. Whether they're de-escalating, encouraging, redirecting or just surviving the day's wildest moments, they do it all with heart, humor and unbreakable spirit. And AMS is lucky to have them. They are the glue, the magic and the superheroes of the site-based program. And this being Teacher Appreciation Week, Lotus Sossoli, who's an EA at Trails and her daughter goes to AMS on the Brain Bowl team. I, I think the reason you read fewer books is you read tougher books. Anyways, she wanted to give a huge shout-out to AMS's band teacher. Anyways, she wanted to give a huge shout-out to AMS's band teacher, Jennifer Carsonson. She led a fantastic field trip to California with 54 middle schools' band members that went off without a single hitch. Two different band groups, Concert Band and Wind Ensemble, both performed two pieces. The performances were excellent. The trip was extremely well organized. They were in multiple locations and stopped at multiple waypoints on the way there and back with multiple vehicles. She is absolutely astonishing in her energy, positivity, and leadership. She only works half-time but does as much or more as any full-time teacher Lola, not Lola, but her mom has ever known. She is an incredible asset to our school. She also organized two separate fundraiser to support the band. I know one of those is local businesses has gift cards and if you pay $20 for the gift card, they give $10 to the band program. I'm sure you've all bought one, right? Okay, good. If you haven't, she's back there. See, she's back there. All right, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, James. And next up, we have AAU report with Alan Prowski.
Okay, thank you. It's a coin toss. Is it going to be cuts and sadness and all of that? Or did the teachers rise to the occasion at the end here? And they did. It's all good stuff because it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so we can relax. Ashland Connect is still welcoming new students in May and we are happy to be a place where all students can find a home in ASD when needed. We are excited about the potential ways we can help attract more students in the future. There has been an increased interest in our program from families this spring compared to previous years, which is promising for the growth of the program. Thank you to everyone who has been showering the AC staff, party of one, with tokens, words, and signs for Teacher Appreciation Week. At the high school, as we heard, prom was fantastic. AP testing has silenced the bells on campus. Yes. And we are in the midst of five amazing days of teacher appreciation, from breakfast and lunches to neck massages. At AMS, by the time this message is being read, it is most likely that the AMS staff will be feeling grateful for the Teacher Appreciation Potluck hosted by staff and parent volunteers earlier this afternoon. It has been a fun week of gratitude for teacher appreciation sentiments, as students and staff have been reminding each other of the talented people that make the AMS community what it is. Despite hardships and changes ahead, the AMS crew remains positive in the support that is maintained by the city of Ashland, families and students that remain supportive for this three-year school. The summation of the endeavors of AMS can be witnessed at the upcoming orchestra concert on May 20th, the band concert and student art show, May 22nd, and the final theatrical production for the school year, the evening of May 16th, as well as a weekend performance on the 17th. We will be saying goodbye to our eighth graders as they upgrade to becoming Grizzlies on June 6th, so there will be a farewell luau on June 5th. Thank you to all who have done any part in getting our students down the road to attending classes, games, rehearsals, competitions, clubs, practices, tests, camps, study sessions, field trips, and extracurricular opportunities that have made this a memorable year for all. Bellevue is ending the year with many field trips and staff planning for next year. The teachers have been feeling very appreciated this week, thanks to the generous PTO and individual families. We are saddened by the loss of classified colleagues that have become dear friends. We are uniting together to keep our spirits high for next year. Thank you to the school board for your leadership during this tumultuous and yet hopeful time. Hellman. Hellman students are presenting to the board this evening, so we will keep our rep report brief and just say an enormous thank you to all of our families, the Hellman PTA, Hellman's classified staff, Sushi Heaven, and the Ashland Co-op for all of your hard work and generous contributions. It has been a delicious and delightful Teacher Appreciation Week. Trails. Our fifth-grade students are up at Earth Teach Tonight and our eighth graders will make their final shopping preparations tomorrow for their rite of passage trip next week, a 40-mile hike along the Rogue River Trail that's spanning five days. Last week, our K-2 students cared for Lithia Park through service learning projects. These trips, along with so many others, are at the heart of our school's 20-year vision, getting kids outside and deepening their connection to nature, which inherently strengthens them in so many ways, including academically. We are worried what they might look like next year. So many cuts often hit the smallest schools the hardest. We are looking forward to ending the year on a positive note with our spring concert on May 20th, eighth-grade graduation, and all-school field day on the last day of school. Two more. Walker. DaVinci Night was a great success this year at Walker, bringing the community together. Fifth-grade students participated in the first-ever Walker Egg Drop during the event. Afterwards, students and families were able to enjoy art from all grade levels. We are so grateful for the appreciation teachers have been receiving this week. Lovely words, flowers, treats, and cards have been shared by our Walker Wolves throughout the week. We are feeling the love. Thank you to our Walker PTO, classified staff, and community. Our first graders participated in the annual Ashland Reads Field Trip and had a great time reading and connecting with other first graders across the district. The fourth and fifth graders are busy practicing for the district-wide track meet next Friday. Spring is here, which means more field trips before we close out the school year. And Willowwind, the Willowwind community celebrated May Day last week with a festive maypole dance by our eighth graders, who were supported by their flag-bearing third-grade buddies. Students made flower crowns, participated in an afternoon fun run, and enjoyed crafts and games organized by our fabulous parent volunteers. Family volunteers are also preparing for two upcoming fundraisers, a Willowwind Community Association rummage sale on Saturday, May 17th, and our annual Bike-A-Thon on June 2nd. These events will help fund a variety of campus projects. Teachers have been enjoying lots of yummy treats and sweet notes this week, also organized by our wonderful community association. Thank you all so much for your support. The Willowwind teachers would also like to extend their heartfelt appreciation to our phenomenal team of educational assistants who work tirelessly and with grace and compassion to make every day special for every student. You are all amazing. And that's it from the front lines.
Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
All right. Unless there are any comments, we will move on to board reports and I will take a volunteer to start off. I guess Russell is selected.
Okay, it's been a busy month. A few high points. I did attend the school board forum, which was great to see some potential future board members and hear their thoughts. I encourage anybody who hasn't yet to watch it. You can find it on the AAUW's website. So check it out, share it with friends, learn as much as you can about the people, and make your best choice. And I note a couple of them in the audience tonight. So from there, I've had the opportunity to meet individually with a couple of those potential incoming candidates. And the nice thing that I'll say, and this was represented at the forum too, is there's so much that everybody agrees on. And there's a lot of wonderful people that want to get involved with the district. And I hope regardless of the outcome, those people do get involved with the district and help bring Ashland forward, working all together. Working all together, I went to the Ashland Little League, called together a meeting with the school district, Parks and Rec, and the city, and many school board candidates as well. And we all took a tour of the fields out at Hunter Park and heard their concerns about, it was more directed at the Parks and Rec fees, but the message that I really appreciated was about getting everybody together in the same room and starting to talk about solutions and how we can all work together to make everybody's situation better. So I love that as a message. And I understand that there's stress involved too, but if we can work together like that, I mean, all of these challenges will be quite manageable, I think. I had the opportunity to go up to Salem on the 24th of last month to do an OSBA advocacy day. And so was able to meet with other school board members from around the state. And we would go and we met with several different representatives and state senators to campaign for our schools and just in general about the need for funding, about avoiding things like unfunded mandates that have hurt us in the past, however well-intentioned. And then specifically for the, the goal would be to raise the sped cap. So for those of you who don't know about that, the districts are only partially reimbursed for the money that we spend for special education services. And if we can raise that cap or even eliminate it, that can balance things out. Because as it is right now, and I stand, I do stand by this as the correct thing, like we need to do everything we can to support the most vulnerable members of our community. But as it is now, we end up having to draw from the general fund in order to support that. And so we're sort of taking from one student to support another. We shouldn't be in that situation. So that was the message that we were trying to present to our representatives. And it seemed to be well-received, fingers crossed on the results. There were other things, but I'll cut it short. The one really high point, really, really fun, was going to go with one of the kindergroups to the wood shop, the high school wood shop with Mark Miller, I believe, is the teacher. And it was amazing. Like he did such a good job of coordinating it. And the sound in that room is, if you can imagine, about 20 kindergarteners with hammers and saws, building things at the same time. It was spectacular. The high school students who were guiding them were so kind and patient. I saw one kid rebuild their little planter box at least three times. Their high school helper never got flustered. It was great. So that was a really special thing to see. And that's my report.
Thank you, Russell.
Jill, welcome. So it was Ashland Schools Foundation Month, which if you're on any PTAs, everybody knows April is set aside for Ashland Schools Foundation. So there was a lot, lot happening with ASF. Had coffee with Erica, went to the donor appreciation. Dr. Hatrick and I enjoyed some amazing food and jazz music by our high school culinary class. And then also the jazz was phenomenal. So that donor appreciation event was, was really fun. Also did a call night, which strongly encourage anyone, if you've never got to do an ASF Call Night, it's so fun. They take tremendous care of you. And, and, and yeah. Yeah, I can't say what I was gonna say, but anyway. Anyway, it was Teacher Appreciation Week, so also worked with WWCA to also do that. So, and I can't read my own writing, so that's it.
Thank you, Jill. Evan, do you want to take a try?
Yeah, let's see, a couple things. One, Alan was telling me it's his last meeting for this year and I just wanted to reflect on the fact that I won't. Alan and I have been sharing microphone duty since the mid-'80s. I'm sure, I know we've talked about this, but Alan was a DJ at KALX, UC Berkeley's campus radio station. I was a newscaster. And so after I did the news, Alan took over and took us from his, what, his six-to-10 shift? Is that right?
Six to nine.
Six to nine, yeah. So Alan, I have to tell you, it's very bittersweet. This is the last time we are trading off on microphones. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all of your input.
There's always KSKQ. Is that what it's called?
No, CalX, which is UC Berkeley's radio station.
No, 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 I said there's always the local.
Oh, there always is KSKQ. That's true, that's true. And then I'm looking at Azalia, and I am president of the Ashland Seroptimus. And I want you all to know that Azalia was awarded a Seroptimus Scholarship for College. And so really impressive. And on a more serious note, I went to the American Education Researchers Association Annual Conference to present from the Computational Thinking Project that Kelly is part of. That was a very sobering conference. One, one of the presentations I went to, the woman announced that she, this was a presentation on how to support students who are English language learners. And one of the women announced she was out of a job because her funding had been cut. And then my colleague on our project had her National Science Foundation funding cut. She is a, she's a math professor and she specializes in bilingual education. It was not an easy conference to be at, I have to say. I also went to a presentation on book banning and one of the things they said is that we all have to work together. So it is really important that our school district works with SOU, works with the ESD. I mean, how do we all end with organizations, political organizations in, in our area? How do we work together to really face these very big attacks that are coming our way? So anyway, that was rewarding to be there, but also extraordinarily sobering. I feel the same way that Russell does. I am not going to be on the board, but I do feel like we're going to be in good hands. That after going to the AAUW candidate forum, I feel like there's a lot of agreement. So that was exciting. All right.
Thank you. So over the past month, I've done the usual community member and parent thing. So I went to tennis matches for my high school student, helped people get ready for prom, volunteered for the overnight camping trip my Trails kid went on, and also continued learning in, in four areas. So I want to share those. One is our academic performance compared to other Oregon districts across the state and then peer districts of similar size. The next is kind of better understanding the, and clarifying the myth of 500 missing students in the district or folks that we lost during the pandemic that live in the district that we are engaging, but they're being served by other educational pathways besides us. Whether there are, I'll phrase it this way, whether there have been any academic impacts of declining enrollment, and then academic and economic impacts of our low vaccination rates as a district. So I'm going to start with the, the serious one and work up to all the good news ones. The first is vaccination, under-vaccination. So we have extremely low vaccination rates. They are some of the lowest in the country. It, what got me thinking about this is somebody that I'm very close with had pertussis. And she was out for a really long time from work. And I was like, oh, God, what does that do to our district if our kids are out or if our teachers are out? What impacts does that have? It has to have an impact, right? So, so I looked it up and, and really looked into this. The costs are huge. So we, we, again, are one of the lowest vaccination rates in the country. Even before COVID, we, we would have outbreaks. We currently have pertussis going through the district. The costs are huge. It's about $300,000 a year in substitute staffing when our teachers are out. And since we have our self-funded health insurance, it's about $500,000 a year that we pay out in, in, that we otherwise wouldn't have to because we've got those mandatory exclusions for 21 days if you've been exposed. And then the most important thing is there's loss-earning time for students. So that's, we're already working on recovering from the academic impacts of chronic absenteeism that grew drastically across COVID. So it's really important that, that we're aware of that. Better news, though, looking at the, you know, the myth of 500 kids in the district, that's a really high number. I don't quite know where that came from, but what I can figure is that it uses rounded-up, outdated census data, but includes everyone 18 and under. So that means preschool kids, five and under, and 18-year-old kids that are SOU freshmen. And it also assumes that everybody that left during COVID still lives here, which is not the case. So in reality, there's, there's about 300 kids that are currently being served by other education pathways, give or take. And that's, that's what we've been saying for a few years. There's good news. So that's good news, that it's not as many kids as, as some folks have thought. Some other good news is that we do know pretty well where they're at. We do, we track exit surveys, we do interviews of families. And so we know that most of those are at other schools. They're either other local districts or they're at Siskiyou, which has 184. They're either other local districts, or they're at Siskiyou, which has 184 students from across the valley, or they're at St. Mary's. That's an attractive choice for some of our affluent families with middle school and high school kids, if they prefer that kind of university prep focus. Next biggest chunk is families that have never engaged with public schools due to values mismatch, followed by homeschoolers that don't participate in the Willowwind program, followed by families in online programs that know about ours but choose others for reasons out of our control. And so there's more good news is that some of those may be recoupable, probably about half. And we've been working on it. So we've been working on strategies to reengage them very actively, addressing root causes, training the best tools for flexibility and alternatives that we have. And those are our choice schools. So Willowwind, Trails, and then also Connect and Throw have been growing and growing and growing since the pandemic. And they are, even in doing those interviews, we were getting people back, reengaged with the district, and we are seeing next year more, more slots for Willowwind opening, which is super exciting. And we're seeing growth at Trails. So we are doing a good job at reengaging those students that still are around, that we lost during COVID. I want to talk about, oh, whether there, I was really curious. I was like, I wonder if, if declining enrollment has had an impact to date on academics? And the answer is no. We are doing really, really well in academics. So I looked at, I, I know that there's, you can look at, like US News and World Report or, or Niche or whatever, but those use kind of delayed data. And if we look at O D E, they have for the most recently completed school year, they don't do rankings, but what they do is at a glance, report cards for every school in the district. And we can do our own rankings from those. We can compare ourselves to other districts. So we are in the top 23% of all Oregon districts. We are in, across Oregon, for all Oregon schools. We are in the top 10, top 10. So that means 95th percentile for E L A and for math. And then we're, we're number 12 for science. So we are doing awesome, awesome, awesome. We are third among peer districts of our size compared to all other districts, between 2,000 and 3,000 students, according to O D E for last academic year. And our attendance rates for younger grades is great, and it's increasing. So we do really, really well with that. And that's a really awesome thing. When we're looking at chronic absenteeism, if our younger grades are bouncing back after COVID, that is awesome. Was that all I had? That might have been all I had. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Let's say, yeah, some really good news there. Thank you. Okay, so I guess that brings it back to me. As probably most of you know, I am running for reelection, and I will try to keep myself from spending two minutes shamelessly self-promoting, but I do hope that everybody out there educates themselves and votes for the school board. The last few weeks have been really a whirlwind of doing a lot of candidate forums, and we already mentioned, we have a couple of our other candidates here. And I share that sentiment, that it was so nice to be on this panel of people who really, for the most part, share the same vision of where we really want this district to go and what we want to do to serve our students better. But mostly, I just want to say thank you to everybody in this room. I want to thank the voters who voted for me last time and let me have these last four years, which have been an absolute joy. I want to thank the board members that have elected me their chair for the last two years, which has been really a truly great honor, and I appreciate your confidence in me. Thank you. I want to thank Dr. Hatrick for coming to join our district here. Really, I cannot express how grateful we are for everything that you have already done in your very short nine months, I think, that you've been here. He's counting every day, isn't he? Okay, a long, long nine months. Okay. But anyway, so I am, I just, this has been such a wonderful part of my life for the last four years, and I really do want to continue in this role as much as I can. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you. Next up, we have public comment. I have three, and I will briefly just review the policy for public comment. You have two minutes to speak. Russell usually serves as my timer if he's ready to do that. Just have you state your name, and you don't really need to state your city of residence, we know where you're from. The board does not respond to public comment. It is just for you to be heard this evening. And we ask only that you refrain from any personal statements regarding individuals or staff. Okay? All right. So first up, we have Alan Perowski. Welcome.
Really not all that different. Okay. First of all, I'd like to publicly thank Dr. Hatrick for getting so creative and rescuing our life-changing Fresh Start program for the next generations of students to come. And yes, and also to thank everyone on the other end of that wheeling and dealing for your own roles in ensuring that Ashland High School's incoming ninth graders have this extraordinary rite of passage to guide them into a safe and happy high school experience. I arrived in Ashland 23 years ago with my family after a three-year search for a new home to raise our children in, and it was an article on Fresh Start in the Ashland tidings that sealed the deal. I was amazed that there existed a community that was so creative and imaginative and outside the box in its thinking towards school. John Muir School, now Trails, Willowwind, the High School Wilderness Charter School. As it turned out, that was also a time of declining enrollment and lots of budget stress. And the house I closed on to walk my two kids, to walk my kids two blocks to school every day was suddenly two blocks from a now-closed Briscoe School, and Lincoln School closed the following year. For the past 11 years, I've been a part of the Alternative Education Program at Ashland High School, now located in Lincoln School, and I've had a front row seat to the long line of students who have said they were going to drop out of school, or life, or both, and who have since gone on to graduate, go to college, get jobs, and start families. I'm reaching out to all school board candidates to please clarify your views regarding your commitment to the alternative education systems here in Ashland. Ashland truly is like no other place. For many of us, it is our last hope to escape corporate educating, rightsizing, and efficiencies. It is a place that still thinks outside the box and tries to meet the individual needs of students. It is also a place where individual adults can feel empowered to actually get involved and make changes. I encourage the community to begin the process of developing a way to keep Lincoln School as the home of our school, our high school alternative education programs, which cannot thrive on the regular campus. Thirty more, 10 seconds. Anyway, there's a large green field that we could use to replace the soccer field that's being lost. There's a beautiful restaurant-sized kitchen. There's so much we can do. Please reach out to me if you are interested in starting this dialogue. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alan. Okay. Next up, I have Reed Sorenson.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank you guys publicly for all the work that you guys are doing in this impossible task of writing the budget. I have been a teacher in this district for 19 years, all in the alternative ed programs. I have two students that are in the school district, so I'm deeply vested in this district. From the time I was hired, the thing that really set this place apart and working at it was the commitment to relationships. Early on, I had a mentor that embedded in me just this philosophy of keep the main thing the main thing. And that just has always resonated with me and has always kind of stuck with me. And I hope that as we're looking at the budgets and we're looking at the spreadsheets and the data that's on there, that we keep in mind the humans that are behind some of those decisions. And as Alan mentioned, the Lincoln Building is where our, our alternative programs are housed. I know that that building's got a lot of different stuff going on with it. But as Eva spoke to earlier, I'd like to read something from one of my students to just give voice to some of those kids. We serve about 80 kids, many who are voiceless in the system, and so, but they deserve to be heard. So this program is the exact kind of soft change that our educational system needs. It's a community that begins with respect, but more than that, it's a community of gratitude. It's like a dandelion that slowly cracks through the concrete, not for the purpose of destroying, but for the purpose of blooming itself and creating a more beautiful world. A world made from gentle seeds of hope. When you come up the stairs of Lincoln, you walk through a garden that you can feel it. I'm sure that you did. The love, the care, the respect, the genuine compassion, and continues to grow into the building and completely honest community of people who are going to change the world. This is the kind of education I didn't realize that I had always craved. The kind where science is explained in a way that can make the balance of the universe suddenly make sense in a series of lightbulb moments. Where the dots between religion, science, history, and the arts are connected like a web of mycelium. Where what's under the ground has as much priority as what's in space and what's right here in our mind and our heart. It's the kind of place that helps you discover who you are instead of shoving you into a one-size-fits-all box. This is the place where I can sit in the grass and the wind and ink my soul into a poem, each word bursting with utter truth, and have an outlet to share that truth with people I genuinely care about and who will continue to think about it. I can take time to be genuinely productive in a way that is meaningful rather than sitting in a dark classroom, waiting for the bell ring, writing an admittedly grammatically correct essay filled with half-truths and full lies. This is not a S P E D program. It is not for druggies, stoners, pregnant chicks, or problem kids. It's not an easy school, or a dumb school, or anything to be ignored. This is a place for dreamers, artists, truth seekers, silenced voices, thinkers, hopers, grateful souls, child souls, strong people, vulnerable people, growers, planters, listeners, criers, wishers, and wondrous, and what a privilege it is to be among them when I could be in math class. And that is not a knock on math, we just don't teach math up there. But thank you, I just wanted to, as you're making some of those decisions, just keep in mind of those humans, please. And then you're all invited to come up and meet those kids if you ever want to take the time, please.
Thank you, Reed. Okay. And my final speaker is Dani West.
Budget cuts are never easy, but not all cuts are equal. The Alternative Education Program at the Lincoln Building is essential because it supports students who are underserved by conventional education. At Lincoln, the environment isn't separate from the curriculum, it is the curriculum. The kitchen, the garden, the space for community gathering, all foster collaboration, responsibility, and social emotional learning. Move the program to the main campus and you dismantle a whole curriculum, you put vulnerable students at risk and put your staff at risk for burnout. What these teachers are doing is saving kids and shaping futures. They did for my child. After four years in alt ed, my daughter is now attending SOU on a full ride because of what they gained there. When you invest in students who don't fit the mold, they don't just survive, they lead as artists and thinkers, environmentalists and change makers. I bought a house in Ashland so my incoming freshmen could join Thoreau. And if this program is cut, we may need to leave the district, and I'm not alone. There's a growing demand for programs like this, but many families don't even know it exists. That's a missed opportunity for the future of the district. It might be tempting to sell the Lincoln Building for a quick financial fix, but that's short-term thinking. You'd be trading a rare asset for fast cash and losing the potential for long-term returns. Let's invest in the Lincoln Building and promote this program as a premium offering. There are grants, federal and private, designed to support exactly this kind of education. Let's bring those dollars here. In a time when schools everywhere are struggling, this program could be what sets Ashland High apart. Let's protect what we've built and lead with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you to our speakers tonight. And our next item is our Student Board Representative Report. So Owen and Azalea, you're back up.
I think we covered most of what we were going to end up talking about already. Most of else, what I can think of is that, I mean, I was just thinking about it. Besides what I've been doing, I'm finishing up my senior project that's related to writing about the meetings, so that's been going well. And I think we also, I was going to talk about, but I keep forgetting what it was. However, I just wanted to say it's been a real pleasure being on the board and being able to serve with you guys. And I think that it's been an incredible experience for me, and it's going to help me in the future. And I'm hoping that input that we've given over the year, even though it was kind of ran short because of the process and the beginning of it, I'm hoping that it was helpful to decisions that were made here.
Thank you, Azalea. So I do want to point out, because obviously you guys are graduating, so this is Azalea and Owen's last meeting with us, unless, I mean, you're always welcome to come back in June, but, you know. But I suspect this will be your last meeting. Anyway, we, we so appreciate everything that you do for us. I mean, that is so important for us, too, to finally have the voice of the students as a part of the board. And I'm really proud that we were able to start that and have you guys continue that tradition. So thank you for everything you've done, and I wish you guys just the best of luck in your upcoming years. So excited. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Superintendent Report. Dr. Hatrick.
All right. Well, good evening. I'm all turned around here. Hang on. So as has become the tradition, I'll begin with our Rotary Student of the Month presentation, which was presented this afternoon. It is my great pleasure and honor to present this month's Ashland Rotary Student of the Month Award to, I can't read. Hang on. No, that doesn't help. I doctors out there, I'll be making an appointment soon. To a truly exceptional young person, Ashland High School 12th grade student and soon-to-be alumni Nolan Hart. In every school community, there are students who quietly but consistently exemplify what it means to be outstanding, not because they seek recognition, but because they live with integrity, curiosity, and commitment. Nolan is one of those students. He may fly under the radar at times, but his character and contributions speak volumes. Nolan has embraced the challenge of rigor, rigorous academics maintaining an extraordinary 3.99 GPA while balancing a demanding schedule that includes taking advanced math courses at Southern Oregon University. That alone would be impressive, but Nolan hasn't stopped there. He's a dedicated member of the Brain Bowl team, where his intellect and teamwork shine, and a hard-working athlete on the cross-country team, where he's demonstrated perseverance and camaraderie. His teachers speak of him not just with admiration, but with deep appreciation. One shared how despite a scheduling conflict between his college-level math and his AP macroeconomics class, Nolan never missed a beat, completing all of his work and showing up with thoughtful questions and meaningful insight whenever he could be in class. Another teacher spoke from the heart, describing Nolan as someone who brings an enlightened, positive presence to every learning environment. He called Nolan a natural leader, not the loudest voice in the room, but the one people naturally look to. Humble, kind, and intellectually engaged, Nolan lifts up those around him. He is someone who, in his teacher's words, will help lead our society into the future. Today, we recognize Nolan not just for what he's achieved, but for how he's gone about it, with integrity, thoughtfulness, humility, and heart. Nolan, congratulations on being named Ashland Rotary Student of the Month. We are proud to honor you today, and we can't wait to see where your journey takes you next. And that is this year's last Rotary Student of the Month. So per policy I I C A, all out-of-state travel will be reported to the board prior to approval by the superintendent. Therefore, I'm informing you of three trips. A H S National Arts Honor Society is going to San Francisco, May 16th through 18th. Bellevue 5th and Helman 4th grades are visiting the Iron Gate Dam in Hornbrook on May 22nd and May 30th, respectively. I want to follow up with just lots of gratitude. Seems like it's the night for that. So first, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. It's incredible. Also, since our last board meeting, and I really, really hope I didn't miss anything. Feel free to shout out if I did. We have also celebrated bus driver appreciation, principal appreciation, and school lunch hero day. So it's been a lot of appreciation. It's been great. I've also had a lot of meetings. I've spoken in a few different venues about my priority to continue to enhance partnerships in different ways. And so I just want to list a few of the agencies that I've been meeting with over the last month just to enhance those partnerships. Y M C A, City of Ashland, Ashland Parks, Ashland Early Childhood Advisory Committee, Rogue Credit Union, and many, many more. So I'll continue to give updates as those kind of solidify over time. Also had my superintendent advisory meetings, and again, those are two, we have a morning and an afternoon. Those were yesterday. Boy, those days last long. That was yesterday. That was yesterday. Also, huge thanks to the Ashland Schools Foundation for all that they do, and to all who participated, either as a volunteer or donor this year in their annual campaign, lot of fun. This year's been really fun, just getting all of these firsts. Although it wasn't my first, I visited the phone bank last year on one of my visits, so this was actually my first second, so that was cool. I also, I'll echo what Russell said, I got to attend another second, Kinder Planter Boxes with Mr. Miller. I did get to stop in last year, and then again this year, and it truly, if you can do it next year, stop in. It's a lot of fun. Let's see, I'm tangled in cords, excuse me. Pardon me. I also had the huge pleasure of attending my first, another first, Ashland Reads yesterday. Such a cool event for our district, for our first graders, a huge thanks to Rotary for putting that on and for all of our volunteers that make it possible, that is such a cool event. And I also, I just want to end by thanking Owen, Azalea, Max, and Toby for their service on the board this year. Not only their service to the community, that's been incredible, but they've also provided me a huge welcome to the Ashland School District. I know, Owen, Azalea, were you part of it, too? My initial tour for my first visit to Ashland, I thought so. So, that's been really awesome. It's also just been an honor to work with them from summer strategic planning, these were the first students I met, I don't know if it was June or July, but we did some strategic planning in the summer, brainstorming higher levels of student engagement, and numerous student events all year. So thank you all for your service, and for those of you who are not here, yeah, thank the other two as well. I really hope, no pressure, hope to see you at the June board meeting. I know you'll be alumni, but that's going to be a fun board meeting, too. But understand if you can't or simply just don't want to. So, on behalf of the district, thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Joseph. And that brings us to new business. So, we have one action item, and that is the IXL assessment adoption, and Michelle has been so patiently waiting. Michelle Cuddyback will be presenting that.
So I came to the board in the fall to request permission to start the process of looking for a new assessment system. And what perpetuated this is we're looking for all of the ways to save money in the district currently. So when I was reviewing all of the different software accounts that we have, iReady really stuck out as a pretty substantial price tag. And having my experience as principal at Hellman, I knew the capabilities of iReady, how we were using it, and that we were also seeking something more from our assessment system. So we have an opportunity, as a cost-saving measure, to also look for something better. So what I brought to the board was our need, remember, we were looking for like the unicorn product, we got close, it's pretty good. So here were the needs we were trying to meet. We wanted to identify a program that will deliver the following at a reduced cost, so that was one of the requirements. We need to have a three-times-a-year metric for both math and reading for K-12. We also need to have progress monitoring measures in reading and math to track student growth throughout the year. In particular, that's really critical for our response to intervention and instruction program, which we use to ensure that students are not falling through the cracks, that we're monitoring their growth when they're in intervention, and especially if they have individual education plans and IEPs, we can track the growth of their progress there with progress monitoring tools. We wanted something that also had personalized learning paths for students to help close skill gaps. So based on the diagnostic, these programs set a trajectory for kids to move through at an independent pace. And also, we wanted it to allow teachers to be able to assign them skills focused on standards that they're studying in class, and also have extra intervention resources for teachers and give us formative assessment data. So that's it, that's all we were looking for. And so what process did we take? The school board allowed us to start that process in the fall. I conducted initial vetting with different product vendors to make sure that they would meet at least our base needs of having a benchmark assessments, progress monitoring, and that they would come in at a reduced cost. Once I vetted those to see if they would at least be in the ballpark, I brought them to a committee that we formed, and we looked at, we had them present a, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought, they presented the program to the committee, and we used a rubric to assess each of those programs. We also initiated a pilot. In my vetting, IXL seemed to be the most promising at meeting the variety of our needs, and so we engaged in a pilot this year with IXL. We had the whole middle school using the program, starting in the winter, and then we had a variety of grades, I think all grades except for maybe second and fourth, but across a variety of campuses as well. We had Willow-Win participate, we had a classroom at Hellman participate, we had a couple classrooms at Walker participate, and one at Bellevue. We had some math intervention, and then also some high school teachers for intervention, both special ed and their reading and math lab classes. So we had a wide variety of folks. On the committee, we had building administrators, we had Christine from Bellevue, and we had Rebecca Gamati from the middle school. We had our instructional coach for K-5, and we also had our admin, Tosa, who's somewhat of an instructional coach at the high school, participate. We had teachers of all levels, including general education teachers and interventionists, so we had a wide variety represented. We had vendor presentations happen, and the committee gave their feedback on the following list. So we have lofty expectations, we had criteria for the screening tool, which you can see, that we went through as kind of a checklist with the committee. Accessibility features were really important, we wanted to make sure that our emerging readers could access the platform in a way that they could really show what they know, even if reading was a lagging skill for them. So we wanted to make sure we had accessibility features, also different languages. So Spanish is also provided on assessments, as well as activities in a variety of other languages for IXL in particular. We wanted potential for other content areas, although we're not there yet. The price point we're looking at right now is math and language arts, but we wanted something that had potential for us to add, as we could, other content areas as well. Okay, to go ahead? Okay. For the progress monitoring tools, these were the types of things we were looking And then finally, for the personalized learning, so the three things we're looking at, the benchmarks, the progress monitoring, and the personalized learning, we really wanted to make sure that could be adjusted by the teacher, that it was age-appropriate differentiation. So what that means is if we have, let's say, an eighth grader, who is, their skill level on the diagnostic is well below eighth grade, we didn't want the platform to then look like it was at a fourth-grade level, right? We wanted it to provide practice, but still look older and more mature for our older students. And so, these programs have come a long way, a lot of them adapt to that, which is great. And we wanted to be able to limit student access to the personalized learning during those diagnostic windows, because you say login, and let's take your assessment, and we wanted to make sure kids could only do the diagnostic and not go on to the personalized learning and do other things on there. We wanted them to focus that time on the diagnostic. So those were some things we were looking for. This was adapted from a great rubric that was a tool from the Center on Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports at the American Institutes for Research. So it was a research-based rubric, we looked at it at a committee, we added a couple things that we wanted to make sure were in there, that maybe the rubric was missing, so we were able to personalize it, and that did not impact the efficacy of the list itself, they actually suggested that you personalized it. So, we went through that process as well. So our recommendation is, as you could tell from the title of this presentation, is that we are recommending IXL as the next district-wide assessment tool. The strengths that the committee saw in this program over others is that, and through the pilot, we learned that students are enjoying it in general, and so it's a little bit, it's engaging for them, it's an easy-to-use platform for teachers and students, it is flexible and adaptable, so there's a lot of ways the teachers can interact with it to make it more personalized for their use in the classroom, they can assign tasks, they can create common assessments. So across the district, we could set an assessment based on our curriculum and specific standards and push that out to all different grade levels who, across the district, so we have common assessment potential. Teachers can also create their own quizzes and assessments in there, based on certain standards if they'd like, so it broadens our assessment potential there. And it gives us the both diagnostic piece, the three-times-a-year, and as students use the program, it's called a pinpoint, so it changes their pinpoint across the year, so you can measure growth throughout the year, which is more of a informative, an informative measure for our teachers to track growth. It also has the personalized learning path, and the reports and data are easy to use. So those were the key strengths that the committee felt had this kind of stand apart from the other products we looked at. We did look at STAR, which is put out by Renaissance Learning. We looked at NWEA MAPS growth as well, and we, of course, compared it to what we already know about iReady, to make sure that it would do better for us. All of those lacked in certain personalized learning. NWEA MAPS and both STAR were, you had to add on with other programs and companies, one of them used Freckle, and there was a huge list of curriculum that one of them used. And so we really liked that IXL had it embedded, and we didn't have to then go negotiate with another provider, another tool, to add on to that. Another fun thing about IXL is that it has our adopted math curriculum for K-5 embedded, so we can pull lessons straight in there and have, the teachers have another tool to support learning in the math curriculum at K-5. So the big question is, what's the price tag? So the quote for IXL is at the top, and so it is, with the professional development, it's $117,470 over for a three-year, three years, don't worry, three years. I did two when I first saw it, I was like, that's not what you told me the first time we talked, and then I did the math, and I was like, okay, that's right. And you can see we have some delayed payment options, so we pay half for the first year, and then it can go 25% for the last two years. That compared to iReady, iReady is $77,000 each year. So over a three-year period, we're looking over $100,000 savings over what we use currently.
Can we ask some questions?
Please.
I, maybe I'm wrong, I think you said you had tested it on middle school and certain elementary grades, has it been tested in the high school at all? Because that was sort of where our concern was.
We did have some high school teachers use it. Primarily, we focused on intervention with the high school teachers, so we had a resource teacher for special education using it with students, we also had like a, you know, they call it math lab, we had a math lab teacher using it with some students to, so we could kind of get a test. We did not have a full grade, use it as the diagnostic for the full grade, but we did have targeted groups.
Okay, because I mean, I know we had this conversation in the past, that was our concern with iReady, is that the older, particularly the high school students, weren't really engaging with it as much as we'd like to see.
Yes, and I think on whatever the assessment is, and with state testing, we know that we have some work to do at the high school level to make sure that our students understand the purpose of those assessments and to really give it their full intention.
Okay.
I have a question about the criteria, just because I'm curious. Did the rubric use, I'm assuming that there was different weights for each of those?
We kind of weighted them as a committee, so we went through to, and we prioritized them of what was the most critical, because not, and in a demo, you're not going to get to see everything, right? So we did, when we reflected as a committee and we talked through each product, we had kind of general overall impressions as well. So it was a bit more qualitative, based on the committee feedback, than coming down to a certain rubric score and seeing which one was the highest. And IXL was pretty clearly standing out as a different tool than what the other ones were. The other ones were more similar to iReady, where it's pretty much just your diagnostic, not a lot of progress monitoring, and the personalized learning path, we'd have to look at a different contract for. There was another question over here.
Oh, you do want to go ahead?
Sure.
So, just remember, I'm a layperson, I'm not a teacher, so be kind.
Yes.
So, there's all these different, you know, AI interactions that teachers are using and platforms that they're using to assess students, you know, I'm, by all these different, I mean like four or five teachers that I know of that are like trying out different ones, like Khan Academy, like Magic, Buss, whatever. And I'm just curious, like, I mean, it seems like in my head that it would be great if it was something like that, and also this, which is, it sounds like there's some, a lot of similarities. Is there, like, I guess what I'm fearful of is that we're investing in technology that is already behind, or that isn't, you know, that there's more up-to-date technology, you know, that by the time we receive this, it's dated, so I'm just, I'm not sure what the question is exactly, but I'm hoping that you know how to answer, like, is there a possible solution that has both AI and all these criteria you're looking at?
We didn't see that in any ones that we looked at. So what these give, and I haven't used Magic School, but what these give that I'm not sure if the AI ones do, I have to do some more research there, is that it gives us normed data. So it lets us know how our student, the percentile where students are performing compared to their grade-level peers across the nation for all the schools that use IXL. And that's an important metric when we're looking at students qualifying for special ed services, for one, and giving us another growth measure, so we can track not only how are they doing on the grade-level standards, but how are they doing in comparison to their peers? Because what we saw coming out of COVID was that kids could be not meeting the grade-level standards, but they would be maybe in the 50th percentile, because across the nation, hardly anybody was meeting grade-level standards, right? So it gives us that comparative measure that's really important for us to see, not only how are we doing as far as instructing students and having them learn the content that we're putting before them compared to other districts that use a measure similar to this. So, does that help? And again, I haven't dabbled in the Magic School, and AI is definitely something that we are pursuing and looking at to see what those tools could net for us, and that's developing so rapidly, as you know, that I think using a tool in the interim for three years while we study and look at those tools and see what they end up being like, isn't a bad place to sit, yeah.
Since it integrates seamlessly with the math curriculum for grade school, is there intent to use it more throughout the year by teachers to be able to monitor progress individually for kids? Like, would they have the kids just doing like math worksheets on it, for example, to track their progress? How would that integrate?
It's more giving the teachers more practice tools, so if they could, they could assign a lesson through there, but it's really letting the teachers have more practice opportunities that they could then put before kids. So our teachers are really thoughtful and mindful about how much screen time they put our kids on, I know that's a concern of our community as well. And so I don't see this taking the place of the math. And so, I don't see this taking the place of the math activities that they're doing in class. It could definitely be augmentative to that, you know, it could be an enhancement, it could be part of a small group rotation, and I don't see it taking the place of the activities that they're doing in class. So, a supplemental tool. Yep.
So, I remember one of the things about iReady was that it's, it was considered predictive of the scores that students would be getting at the end of the year, big state standardized tests. What do we know about this program in terms of how much, how it predicts? What we, I mean, we haven't gotten to that point, right? Because our students haven't taken.
Right. They're engaged in both of these springtime assessments right now. So, we won't know that until the summer, when we can go back and do our own analysis of the kids who participated in IXL, and then how they did on the Smarter Balance Assessment. By all of their standards, they say that they're highly correlated to OSAS. So, it's not uncommon for all of them to say that, all of the different tools, because they know that that's what schools are looking for. And so, I think it'll be interesting for us to see how closely aligned it is. We'll have to do our own analysis for our own students.
We'll have done that after we adopt it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And iReady also claimed to be predictive, and we've found that, yeah, for most it is, you know, there's always the outliers that it's not.
When you say normed, what is that, school-wide, district-wide, broader?
It's through IXL, so all districts that participate, all students who test in IXL nationally.
And then, how many districts in Oregon?
I don't know. That's a good question. And we do have some, you know, I think Phoenix Talent uses it, Rogue River uses it most recently, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of neighboring districts that use it as well.
And then, you mentioned that the, I can't remember the name of the math curriculum for K through 5, but it's embedded in this technology. But is it, so mid-school math, and then the high school math, is there potential to have that embedded? And if we would have gone with the same curriculum for those three, would it have been potentially embedded all the way through high school?
I didn't, I don't know if they have the illustrative math middle school portion in IXL, because I wasn't looking for it, because we don't use it. It's a great question for us to explore. I think it's a nice, it's a nice-to-have. I'm not sure, you know, teachers are going to rely on it heavily, but it is definitely a nice bonus to have that as part of the system, as something that the other tools didn't have. So, the potential is better.
All right. So, I think this is an action item, so we have to bring it to a vote. So, if everybody has had their questions answered, I will take a motion to approve using IXL as our assessment.
I move that we approve you using IXL as our assessment tool.
A second?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. All right, and that was the final item on our agenda, so we are down to announcements and appointments. So, the Budget Committee will convene on Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, and Wednesday, May 28th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the District Office Conference Room. The Board will convene a work session on Thursday, May 22nd, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. A budget hearing to adopt the budget, as approved by the Budget Committee, will take place on Thursday, June 12th, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in City Council Chambers. And directly following the 7:00 PM budget hearing, the Board will hold its regular session meeting on Thursday, June 12th, in City Council Chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.